No problem.
This meeting is.
Those are our box and Frank Roberts, and so.
Cool. Okay, I'll be there.
So we are going to call to order the special meeting of the PRC C on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh two P M. The purpose of this special meeting is for one item, which is the use of the T B D funds, continued use of the T B D funds by annual budget for the maintenance, garden maintenance on Taiyi. So we have members here from the Garden Club, which are the originators of this. Who would like to speak for the Garden Club?
Well, sure. Might as well. Scott Haselman here. Former president and also the coordinator and chair of the Taiyi maintenance program and improvement. It's not just maintenance, but improvement as well. And so this has gone back quite a few years and the the club was having a harder and harder time maintaining all the improvements that were done on Taiyi. And eventually we approached the county council to authorize some use of the funds from the transfer benefit. Because it's, you know, how that, how those funds are used is very, very specific and very limited. You know, to to the roads predominantly. And so it seemed like a perfect fit. And it turned out it was a perfect fit, actually. And our requirements were fairly modest. You know, compared to, you know, the millions and millions that it cost to do other things. And this has proved to be a real game changer for being able to maintain the landscape improvements on Taiyi Drive, the trees, the mounds, the plantings, et cetera. Because it turns out that really the maintenance was an ongoing project, an ongoing thing that was was draining a lot of energy and funds, you know, based on volunteer work. And quite frankly, I don't think we could really keep up with it and give it the attention it really needed. And as a community project is something right out there in the middle of everything. So it's been vital, really, to keep the road maintained, keep that, all the landscaping maintained. On the one hand, it's been vital to keep it maintained with the use of the T B D funds, which is, which we're really grateful for. But on the other hand, it's also freed up the ability of the Garden Club to proceed with what it, with what else it wants to do, which is continue to improve the situation. Improvements of the landscape, improvements of the landscape are not what we feel the community at large and therefore the T B D funds and so forth are meant to to be focused on. I think it's, we felt it was more responsible that the T B D funds be focused strictly on maintenance. Which is an ongoing thing. And that the club itself, through its volunteer work, through its, you know, garden tour, fund fundraising, et cetera, et cetera, could then implement further improvements that the club itself would continue to maintain, you know, replacing dead, you know, things that die, et cetera, et cetera, right? And so it's, it's, it's made quite a difference is enable and to shift those two different agendas. So that's why we are hoping and of course are happy if, you know, that continuing to be able to access those funds for maintenance.
I have a question.
Okay.
In light of the recent power outage resulting from the large tree falling and then, you know, noticing, well, there are maple trees planted beneath those power lines.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So my question is, are there plans to keep those trees groomed, pruned and so forth, so that they don't ever run the risk of?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. To to specifically address that, okay? They aren't maples, they're liquid amber. The liquid ambars that are there will never grow higher than they are.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, they were planted with that in mind.
Okay.
Secondly, the liquid ambars, the root system of the liquid amber goes straight down. All right? That was planted also so that it would not intrude into the road, not intrude into the, you know, sidewalks or gutters and so forth and so on, that, you know, along the road.
Spell the name, liquid?
Liquid amber, A M B E R, yeah, this is pronounced amber. I mean, no, it's like saying climatis instead of climatics.
Yeah, the tree which did come down is not part of our project.
Right, no, aware of that, I just.
Yeah, that's one of his big monster.
Do they not make like maple trees?
They do sort of, but, you know, we don't have to get into the details, but one has like a little spiky ball. Okay, that's a liquid amber.
Okay.
Maple tree has a little seed that looks like a pair of wings.
Right.
So we don't have any of the wings.
Okay, and so they cap out at?
We tap out where they are.
Uh huh, excellent.
And and in fact, it's usually recommended that they not be pruned. Because wherever you cut it, it encourages growth.
Right.
But naturally, they do prune themselves, you know? I mean, limbs will break. We also have made a, an effort, and that's part of what the contract with the maintenance people, the T B D funds are meant to do, are to prune them where along the walkways, so nobody pokes their eye out on some limbs sticking out.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So my question would be, historically, how much is the contract usually for each year?
Well, in the past, it's been, initially, we figured it would be around seven or eight grand a year. And and when it got, when we figured out that that was the case, we knew that we're going to tap our own thumbs out really fast. And and there's only so much that volunteers can do. This last year, or the last, yeah, this last cycle, the the budget was ninety-five hundred. We've come in quite a bit lower than ninety-five hundred this past year, mostly due to the drought conditions, because it was such a little growing. They didn't have to mow as often, there was not that much pruning to do. Savvy enough, quite a few of the C N O F S had died due to the heavy winter, previous winter, et cetera, et cetera. I I suspect that that's generally the, the, the area. This year, we'll probably come in a little above six grand, someplace between six and seven thousand, which is still within our initial.
So is that including the county administrative costs?
Yeah, well, no, you see, that, that's the charges, that's, that's the actual cost of our contractor. I'm not really quite sure what the county costs are now. Initially, they were high.
I know the.
I mean, candidly, I thought a little, you know, much. I I don't, we were assured that that would never happen again. Because it was due to the first year setting up administration fees, et cetera, et cetera. I would only be guessing as what the county fees are, but I believe in the previous couple of years, they were someplace around two grand or so. So it was, you know, so, you know, so to answer your question, as general, what it is.
So this talks about twenty thousand dollars each year on roadside maintenance contracts.
Ten thousand dollars.
Well, the wording, the wording is interesting, right?
Yeah.
Because it says twenty grand, all right?
It's a not to exceed.
Huh?
It's what we lovingly call a not to exceed.
Yes.
So.
Not to exceed twenty, yeah.
Not to exceed twenty, so.
To me, the key word here is, is whether it's biennial or or biannual. Whether it's twenty grand per year or twenty grand for two years. My understanding is it's twenty grand per year.
Right, yeah, that's what it looks like to me.
Exactly.
It's a, it's a not to exceed in case.
Exactly.
There's.
In case there's a major project or whatever.
Right.
But the other thing I find very interesting in the wording is it doesn't specify just the Garden Club's talking maintenance, it's talking about maintenance of road improvements in general. So in my thinking, the more the Garden Club, and which we have done, actually, in all these years it's been doing, the more the Garden Club keeps in touch with the people doing the maintenance and me, and in fact, we have to supervise what they do, and there's a bunch of paperwork involved, it's not just a carte blanche. That frees up some funds maybe for other people to do other things, I don't know. But if there's, there's twenty grand there that can be used every year, we are hopefully being able to use at least seven or eight of that per year.
What do you think about the wording?
Seems kind of a trip.
Guess it is.
Yeah, the two clauses, one says spending twenty thousand each year. And then the other one says the biannual budget of twenty thousand, I just looked that up. Very example, the dictionary is the budget for the next two years. It's specific here to.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is a draft resolution.
Yeah.
And the draft resolution says the district's operations plan calls for spending twenty grand each year on roadside maintenance contracts. So that's not specifically just the Garden Club. And in fact, I mean, I would love to go on record as saying Garden Club never intends to burn through twenty grand a year on the Taiyi project, it's unreasonable.
And and I have another question. Who is the Honorable Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District Board of Supervisors?
Well, that's, that's an ex officio, ex officio of the of the county council.
Okay, it's county council acting as.
Okay.
Just as they do others, like county council acting as the clean water, you know, it's county council.
I thought maybe I needed a powered wig or something.
Oh, yeah, I think you look great in a powered wig.
You don't think this is?
No.
Well, because interestingly enough, if you actually go back and read the whole thing for the initiation of the T B D fund, the county council acting as the T B D fund administrators are actually supposed to have special meetings similar to they have, you know, council as the flood control district, council, right? Where they have special meetings just for that, we're actually supposed to have that for the T B D fund. Where they're supposed to meet specifically, you know, like we have committee for Public Works and we're supposed to actually have a special meeting, that's one of the things in the back of my, my brain to ask for one, even if we had one by yearly.
Yeah, right.
If not quarterly.
What what we're doing is just a small little, a little piece of the potentials there to benefit point.
Right, for the T B D fund and also getting a better understanding of what we can and can't do with the T B D.
Yeah, and plus with the wording saying biannually, that's just for the renewals, just saying it's being reviewed every two years.
Every two years.
Yeah, we only have to authorize this every two years.
And so, yeah, so they're just asking for Prac to affirm that they still are. Turns support up. Funds for.
Okay. So I'm gonna have to go. Does anyone else?
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Maybe you.
Awesome.
Is this the only expenditure under the T B D funds?
Currently, yes.
And what percentage of the T B D funds would this represent?
Well, right now, the T B D fund, the last report I got was at one point two million, and I think I got that report in twenty twenty.
That's how much it brings in per year.
No, that's how much is in it now. It varies year to year, because it's a gas tax. So of course, the amount brought in during COVID would have been minimal.
Yeah.
I can send you the spreadsheet. The yearly amount, it it ranges between, I've seen it at forty-five thousand, I've seen it at almost ninety thousand. So it it fluctuates.
It's one point seven percent of the T B D fund.
That we currently have. Yeah.
And that's at the one point two million.
Right.
If we go by the high end of your.
Yeah.
Round numbers, hundred K. This would be like ten percent.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is one point, this is less than two percent.
No, if you're saying any, not.
Oh, I know.
What percentage of the annual addition to the fund?
Yeah, because historically, other than this, when I audited the T B D fund as far as they could give me information on, it was used for some signage down in Maple Beach for the no parking signs and such. It was used for some signage coming into the point for, you know, the roots and 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 such. And prior to that, it was used, a big chunk of the fund, don't quote me on this, I think it was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, was used to put Johnson Road through, because Johnson Road did not used to go all the way to Taiyi.
I remember.
Um, it started at Mill and then went up. And it went partway up, and then there was a big forest space. So they used about three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the T B D fund for that. Prior to that, they can't tell me what any of the expenditures were. Alls I could see was like ninety thousand dollars getting moved to someplace else and, you know, two hundred thousand getting moved to someplace else. And when I think, I have no history of what that actually got spent on.
I could comment on, although other than the very slush funds, I do know that the initial improvement on Taiyi, the trees, the liquid amber trees, they were accessed from T B D funds when they were very, very, very first, Sid Wallace found out about it or knew about it or whatever, approached the county and access some of the funds in order to actually pay for the original improvement. So this is sort of a continuation of.
Yeah. That's probably some of the early ones that they couldn't tell me, there was just like money moving and they couldn't, they didn't really have the paper trail of.
Yeah.
Where, why it moved.
Right, right, right.
But.
Sorry, just a follow up.
Yep.
The, so the conversation we were having before the meeting started. Which do we anticipate any expenditures on the T B D fund or?
Yes.
That project?
Yes. Not for the initial assessments and engineering, but for some of the actual work, they will want to access T B D funds for some of it to try and get whatever the crucial projects are. Done. So if, depending on what the county budget is, once we, the engineering comes, what they have available, if there's a couple of projects that have to be done like right away, and they only have a budget for, you know, to try and get as much done. Because it might be a project a year, right? Or one area per year, right? That gets taken care of and using, accessing some funds from the T B D would allow, you know, areas that are designated important to get done quicker. But yeah, they will want to access T B D.
Of course, the county attorney said couldn't use T B D funds.
No, we can't use it for engineering, you can use it for construction.
Okay.
Any kind of planning, no, but if you have a project that's ready to go.
As long as it has to do with roads.
Right.
Not just, not just drainage, but drainage that.
As long as we can tie it to the public, yeah.
As long as you can, so anywhere like that the water goes over the roadway, that would be considered T B D eligible.
Or undermining.
Or undermining the road. But if it was just, it's flooding people's houses, but it's not undermining the roadway or anything like that, then it wouldn't be T B D eligible. Does that make sense?
This twenty thousand you're talking about, does that include maintenance of equipment, if you own any equipment or?
No, that, the twenty grand is strictly for, or it wouldn't be twenty grand for us, but the money that the Garden Club would spend is just for the contractor, it's up to them to maintain your own equipment and so forth and so on, it's not covering Garden Club or whatnot. We do have some that we've used in the past by volunteers, and that's totally funded by the Garden Club's funds, you know, from our previous fundraising act.
It's just whatever the contractor bills for the landscape.
Straightly based on, you know, it's just bottom line for the contractor, it's something to fix their stuff.
Do we need?
All we gotta ask everybody. See if we have questions from people online. Anyone online have a question or comment? Please unmute yourself. Great, seeing none. Now you can make your motion.
Okay, I move that we adopt the resolution for the final twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget for the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District of twenty thousand dollars biennial budget of twenty thousand dollars.
So it's actually a motion to support.
Okay.
I'll second that, guys. I'll second that.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, so to clarify, it's a motion of support for the Public Works.
About the resolution.
Um, Public Works Resolution for Use of T B D, Continued Use of T B D Funds for the next two years.
Ten thousand per year.
Yeah, twenty thousand per year. That's up to twenty thousand per year. They've never gone that high.
So we may want to clarify that in our writing, there's a letter of support, is that what we're writing?
Yes, it's based on, the letter of support would be based on the actual resolution, which is the, the not to exceed twenty thousand. And partly, the reason why it's not ten thousand, twenty thousand, just to be clear, is because there's also the county fees on top of it. The very first year it happened, the county fees were actually as much, if not more, than the actual contractor, which they've rectified since. But.
Just for clarity, if if this is the last, the now therefore is what we are expressing support for, that says twenty thousand for two years.
Whereas the district intends to approve its twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, nothing like meaning, whereas the district operation plan calls for spending twenty thousand each year on roadside maintenance contracts. We have heard the benefit district's funding for the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District is approved with that's why I mentioned the budget of twenty thousand. That is a complete contradiction.
Well, actually, it might mean for two years. Yeah, it might not be a contradiction. No, there's twenty thousand dollars. We're not, we're saying we're only going to spend ten thousand, but there's a ten thousand dollars that still exists. That's ten thousand dollars that we won't have to go back and do a budget. I say we, I mean, you know, the royal we. Yeah. Ten thousand dollars, you don't have to go to, go back and do a budget for them, because what can, we have a stormwater plan is that there could be lots of T B D projects, they're going to have to go back for those to amend this budget if it's next year.
Right.
So this just gives us a little, a little pocket.
Right.
Or other projects that I'm sure they've already got in mind.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. Well, and the twenty thousand, I see, can go over the two years, you could spend eight thousand this year, twelve thousand next year. Right. And it can be amended, perfect, I understand.
Can you reread the resolution? Or is it just separate?
It's, yeah, yeah.
I guess.
Okay.
It's twenty grand a year.
So we have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that passes unanimously, so, Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
I need you to create an email
Okay.
stating that we have a meeting today and it was a unanimous vote to support.
Yes.
And we need to get that emailed off. To, you can send it to Jim.
Okay.
And C C, Rihanna?
Okay.
At the Garden Club?
Info at Point Roberts Garden Club.
Yeah, perfect. And yeah, you can send it to Jim.
Okay.
Because he's actually the lead on, on that.
Okay.
And county council meeting tomorrow is at what time?
I forget what Brian said.
Because this is for their meeting tomorrow, so.
Thank you.
Um, well, in that case.
I'm not doing anything later tonight, it's okay.
Hold on, I just. Oh, yeah, Jim's in, still in, sorry. I've got too many county emails coming in. It's Josh that's got Jim still in town. It's a special meeting, is it a budget, special budget meeting tomorrow?
No, I think they're just taking it to, I have to back up to the original, no, taking it to county council, this resolution for their county council meeting. I think it's for a regular council meeting.
Right.
County council usually only meets on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Because we would tell them.
Well, that's why I'm saying there's special budget meetings that are happening, I'm just trying to open Legistar.
That's what I'm looking for.
Was it an email from Brian?
Was it the original email from Brian Walker?
Yeah. Yeah, he was interested in that.
Yeah, because he was interested in the fact that we were meeting tonight.
Right.
When we met with him today. Hold on, the night, so there is a special meeting on the night at nine thirty A M, ten forty, oh, they moved council from today to tomorrow, because today is election voting. So they moved it. So it would probably be needed for, let me go through here, the ten oh five, sorry, eleven oh five A M.
A M.
Well, that's the Council Finance Administrative Committee. And usually, anything goes through there before it goes through council. But let me just double check council. And did you, I'm looking at the resolutions tomorrow. Introduction, courthouse, budget, levies, 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 courthouse fund, capital improvement, there we go, it's on tomorrow night. The county council meeting, it's A B twenty twenty-two dash six one one, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District. So it's agenda number nine tomorrow.
Yeah, because Brian just said Prac simply needs to reaffirm their continued recommendation to the T B D funds use for this purpose.
So that is agenda number nine, it should go pretty quickly, because that's actually before the public hearing and before open session. Because usually, everything after open session, you know, you're waiting.
That would be a closed meeting then, or be on soon.
Yeah, no, it'll be on soon. Yeah, it's just, I'm saying it starts at six, so it'll be shortly thereafter, because they have the consent of minutes, and then it's an introduction item. So it's going up for introduction tomorrow.
And then was.
And then on the twenty-second, it would go for final. Because it has to go for introduction two weeks before it can be final.
And was there eleven A M finance?
Um, yeah, there's a finance meeting at eleven ten.
So probably it needs to be.
Right in the area.
Prior before.
Yeah. It'll be at that meeting, it'll be one of the things, I can open that meeting and see where it lands on their docket.
So if it's ten-ish A M, email push now, I'm sure it'll make the agenda.
Well, it's already on the agenda.
I mean, the paperwork, they would have it for.
Yeah, it's a matter of, yeah, just making sure that it's.
The email will be there before they are.
Yeah. Okay. What did I say? What did I say the resolution number was? Twenty twenty-two? It's actually not on, um, finance. It's going straight to council.
Oh.
Because it's them acting as the TBD.
Right, is there a special district?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
As long as it's there at some point tomorrow before so it can be added to the packet. Perfect.
I'll have it in before I take my truck next door here to be serviced.
Okay. Well, seems that that's all we have for the special meeting. I will remind everyone that we have a regular PRCAC meeting next Thursday, the seventeenth, seven PM, as well as Zoom. So as many people who can attend as possible, that would be great. Cause obviously with the change in weather, we have lots to discuss. We'll give you an update then um, on mine and Brian's four-hour trek with Public Works today. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Well, see you next Thursday.
See you all, thank you.